As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the many blessings of this day, Lord, and we ask now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move all the items under number seven, old business, to after items under old business, number 10.
Under other business. All right, any others? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Under administrative items, the next item is the amendments to the bylaws for the Public Art Advisory Board.
Mayor and council, per recommendation of the Public Art Advisory Board, on October 18th, the board recommends changing the wording to their bylaws regarding the number of members on the board from nine to 11, and that will result in change the number of quorum in the bylaws.
Questions or comments for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we adopt the resolution 2022-85.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of the resolution number 2022-85. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Up next is our introduction and special presentations, and we'll begin with employee introductions.
Good evening. Matt Lorin, Parks Recreation Department. I'd like to introduce our newest recreation program coordinator. She's a lifetime resident of Clayton, graduated from Clayton High School, then graduated from ECU. Sorry. She comes to us, she was our 2021 camp director. She went into the school system when she got her degree in education, realized that she had a passion for Parks Recreation. So Cassidy Canada is our newest Parks Recreation coordinator.
Hey, everyone. It's very nice to meet y'all. Like Matt said, I grew up in Clayton, so I'm very excited to be back here working full-time. I did graduate from ECU, go Pirates. I heard there's some Pirate fans on the board. But yeah, I'm just very excited for this opportunity.
Wonderful. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Do you know any good roofers in Clayton?
I don't.
I thought so.
Yeah.
All right, and up next will be the presentation of the mural.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Sarah Pericone. I chair the Public Art Advisory Board, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to tell you about we're getting a new mural, and it's fantastic. Now, Laura Johnson here not only opened a fabulous store in town, Muvology, but now she's going to give us another mural, and it's really nice. I'm going to have her tell you a little bit about it and when it's going to be started, all right?
Hey, thank you all. I have been driving past the building where my store is for about three years or so, and, well, prior to moving in, and always saw the side of the building and always thought that a mural would be beautiful there. And then, like, my very next thought was that it needed to be something that sort of gave a nod to our trail system and the accessibility of that through our downtown. And so my artist is here today, Buffy, and this is what she came up with. She actually spent some time down there and took pictures of people and used them as inspiration for the mural that she designed.
And she'll start tomorrow?
And she plans to start tomorrow if it's okay with you guys.
Isn't that fabulous? I mean, that is going to be so exciting to see. So we've got one coming in from one side of the town and another one coming in from the other side of town, and that is, that's really exciting. Plus, I'm going to just give a little advertisement here from Muvology, but when Christmas is coming, and I think everybody should go in there and take a look at something either for yourself or your family, because she's got some fantastic pieces of athletic clothing in there. You don't even have to be an athlete, but you could look good. So just want to thank her for taking this on and adding this another exciting thing to downtown.
I think it's pretty awesome. I think the proposal is pretty awesome. I'm loving the whole part of the bridge. It's almost 3D-ish, you know? I just, I love that. And I think it's the perfect canvas for the next mural, so thank you for that, you know? A lot, a lot of strong balance in this composition. I love the fairness and equity of representation in this. Like, I like everything about this. It's, it's spot-on. It's Clayton. So, thank all of you. Anyone else?
Good?
Yes.
I just want to say I love it, too. I think it's vibrant, energetic, just represents our town, so thank you for doing this.
It's beautiful. I love the colors. I love the energy, so thank you so much for taking this on.
Thank you. I wanted everybody to love it. That's just anybody that drives by, and especially you all, so.
Okay.
Awesome.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
I just want to say as well, I'm starting to become a big fan of art as well, and just kind of looking at it, it's, it's beautiful. Anybody that drives past it, they, they'll love it, and so, good job.
Well, it's just one more thing for people can enjoy when they come to town, which was our goal, is to add things like that. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Are you going to be done by Friday?
[laughing]
Just asking, just for the record.
She's going to start tomorrow, and weather, with weather and everything like that, I think she was saying four to five weeks. It might be shortly after Thanksgiving.
Awesome. But in time for the Christmas parade. How perfect. And I do hope staff is going to be able to document this. That'd be fantastic. All right, thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Up next is our first public hearing. It's 2022-58 SUP Take Five Oil Change. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and I will turn it over to the attorney for some further explanation of quasi-judicial.
Thank you, Mayor. Council's familiar with this process. For those listening in who are not, this is referred to as an evidentiary hearing or quasi-judicial process. Council sits as an impartial decision-maker, much like a judge. There are due process requirements, including a fair and impartial decision-maker as one, much like a court, opportunity to examine witnesses, testimony is sworn, and certain subject matters require expert testimony, just like they would in a court of law. For example, matters like engineering, traffic, stormwater, property values would require expert testimony. Under the law applicable to this type of process, if the applicant satisfies the criteria in the town code, then the permit should be allowed. Any questions?
All right. So this has been noted as a public hearing, and anyone who is going to speak on this topic, anyone, please stand and take the oath.
Anyone wishing to offer testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? Okay, and when you come up to speak, if you'll sign the oath sheet, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll give a, provide a brief staff presentation, and then the applicant, and they have an attorney representing them, will have a presentation as well. So this is a special use permit for Take Five Oil Change, which is classified under our Unified Development Code as vehicular sales and service use. It's proposed to be located on US 70 Business, just west of Southmore Street, on a vacant parcel, shown there on the aerial map, on a property approximately 1.41 acres in size. Here's the site plan for your information. And again, this is, the site plan has been reviewed by the TRC and approved in October, pending the outcome of the special use permit. The future land use map classifies this area as an employment center area, and the land use plan states employment centers provide locations for primary employment and economic development opportunities, but employment center land uses may also include a limited amount of supporting commercial uses such as restaurants and convenience retailers to serve employees. And as you can see, this property is also surrounded by B3 zoning, which includes, uses there include retail restaurants, medical offices, and other service uses. Considerations for the town council on this SUP. Again, you make the final decision regarding special use permits. The special use permits and the applicant shall address specific findings of fact. The burden of producing competent and material evidence showing these findings of fact are met, is on the applicant, and all findings must be met for a special use permit to be approved. As you consider the recommendations in the staff report, you may approve the SUP with the proposed conditions, add or remove conditions with the agreement of the applicant, or deny the application upon finding that one or more of the findings are not met, or you may also send the application back to the technical review committee for additional consideration. The findings of the fact and the applicant's response are provided here on the screen. In the application, the applicant went through the four findings and provided a response for each of them, and they will, I believe, are prepared to expand on that tonight. And finally, staff does recommend four conditions if council does decide to approve this special use permit, and these conditions have been agreed upon by the applicant. The first condition is that a final plan set be provided and delivered to the planning department for review and approval with the conditions added to it. Second one's the development shall be constructed in substantial conformance with special use permit as approved by the Clayton Town Council and associated site plan approved by town staff. Third condition is that the development obtain electricity from Town of Clayton Electric Utility. And fourth condition is that the buildings in the development will be constructed in accordance with architectural elevations provided in the associated site plan, including identified facade materials. That completes the staff presentation for this. As I mentioned, the applicant and their attorney are here with the presentation as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for staff? If not, we'll turn the floor over to the applicant.
Carolina. I am the aforementioned attorney here on behalf of the applicant. And with me tonight is Zach Holland with Durbin Development. They're the developer of this project, along with Will Sworingen and Ryan Gallagher of Bowler Engineering. They are the project engineer. It looks like Ben's got my... Almost. Here we go. All right. So Ben did a great job of summarizing it. I just thought I'd give a couple of extra details just to give you a sense on exactly what this project is. So many of you are probably very familiar with this location, right there on 70. Apologies for the feedback. Right there on 70, it is in front of the Clayton Summit Office Building. It's in the front yard. Let me make sure it's on my phone. It's right in the front yard of that. Essentially, you can see it there. I sort of tried to draw it in red there, but basically, what the project is here is, is they're planning, Durbin is planning to develop what I call the entire front yard there. The area that's subject to the special use is in green. That's where the Take Five Oil Change would be. Their plan is to develop the area shaded in blue for permitted by right use, likely a restaurant. I don't know if they've completely nailed that down yet, but just to give you a sense on where that's going. And then, just to give you a sense on where we are, this is across the street from the Dollar Store. You've got the DQ across the street, along with a couple of gas stations. Biscuitville is just north and west of this property. You've got the Canadian Center right there. That's got the Gold's Gym. I think there's a Jew's store, stuff like that. There's a gas station down to the southeast, and then you've got a couple industrial buildings to the north. Here is the proposed site plan. If you've never been through Take Five, it's like any other oil change, except you stay in your car. So if you haven't, just try it out. The, as you can see on the site plan, I spent a little time on this when I, when I first got this. I was like, where's the building? Because it's a very small building. As you can see, it's basically a drive up to an area where they're going to have the building. As staff noted, this does meet all of the UDO criteria. And this, this is just an excerpt from the staff report. It is consistent with the surrounding land uses and the, and the future land use map. As Ben noted, it is designated employment center. And while, you know, while this will have some employment, this is more of a support function, right? This is, this is a sort of a convenience retailer, to use the phraseology of the, of the comprehensive plan. It is surrounded by commercial uses, as I've noted, and we are available to answer any questions. I believe that your packet has, has copies of the plans in it, which show, you know, landscaping, all that stuff. So we are available for questions.
Questions or comments? Mr. Sims?
Yes, so, am I seeing this right? Does the, the building that's going to be behind us where the VA is?
I don't, it's, it is, it is a medical office building. I don't know off the top of my head if VA rents some space in there or not, but there, there are medical uses.
So, so how does that affect as far as the entrance and exit of that, that building there?
That's a great question. So, does this top button, does it create a red dot, or is it powered up?
It blows it up.
Oh, blows it up. All right. I'm going to walk up here, if y'all don't mind.
If you see where that driveway is?
Basically, currently, there's a driveway with, with aisles of parking in there, and then the medical office building is surrounded by a parking field on all four sides. What this basically does is it realigns the, the current driveway into just a, a shared access drive. So you're basically just removing the parking, and where the development is going in front of the building really is just in the sort of landscaped areas. The parking for the, for the VA and the other medical uses is on the top, basically off the top of the screen in a parking field around the existing building.
So they still have entrance from there and an entrance from behind?
Yeah.
I know about the entrance from behind, yes.
Yes, so there'll be a shared entrance off of 70. It's not going to, the entrance from 70 will remain where it is. They're just realigning once you get in. Is that, is that, yeah, okay. I was checking with engineer.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding, you know, the oil change and the used oil. I don't know if anybody from Take Five's here, but what, what's the typical procedures on storing that? I know there's environmental, you know, issues around that. There's certain state laws and federal laws, but if somebody can maybe just address those real quick?
Yeah, I'll let Zach come up here. Short answer is basically that they don't have any underground storage tanks or anything onsite, so I'll let Zach come up.
Yeah, the way we, sorry, the way we deal with the oil, it's kind of a self-contained that if there is any spill, it's all contained within the building. The oil is stored. If there is a spill, we have pipes running through the building, like a PVC pipe, to the three bays where a person would be underneath giving the oil change. And anything that would spill would go into those bays, be self-contained, and then lead into double-walled steel used oil containers. And then those would be picked up by a private company, and the used oil will be vacuumed out into their system to once again limit spills and get rid of the waste through that private company weekly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? All right. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? No one here to speak in opposition, we'll turn it over to council for questions. Go ahead.
I would just say, in my review of the application, it met all four findings of fact.
Does that need to be expressed for the record, or is it just going to be entered into as a part of the packet?
It can be entered as part of the packet, Mayor.
Okay, very good. All right. Any other questions for the developer or for staff? If not, I'll call you into, whatever it is I'm supposed to call you into. I know, deliberation. Thank you, Jason. I think it's the sugar from dinner this evening. All right, and once in deliberation, no questions asked of staff or developer. Wishes of the council.
I make the motion that we approve Special Use Permit 2022-58 with conditions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval based on conditions included. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next public hearing is 2022-67 SUP Magnolia Point Townhomes. This is also a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this matter, you'll need to be sworn in by the clerk. So I'll turn it over to the clerk.
Anyone wishing to offer testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true to the best of your knowledge and belief? And when you come up to speak, please sign the oath sheet. Thank you.
Good evening again. So this is Magnolia Point Special Use Thank you.
Good evening again. So this is Magnolia Point Special Use Permit. It's a request to construct 68 townhome units on approximately 13.83 acres, located on Shotwell Road between Amelia Church Road and US 70 Business. And the land is currently vacant, as you can see on the aerial map on the screen. Provided on the screen is the associated site plan or subdivision plan, again, included for informational purposes. And this has been reviewed and approved pending the outcome of the SUP by the technical review committee at staff level. Also wanted to provide the proposed architectural elevations that were included in the subdivision plan package, showing there the front elevations and the rear elevations. The future land use plan map shows this area as high-density residential, which would allow up to 10 units an acre. The development has a proposed growth density of 4.55 units per acre. And the comprehensive plan states that the high-density residential area provides for housing near major transportation corridors, existing commercial areas in downtown. These areas have a connected street network, adequate pedestrian bicycle facilities, and are served by public water and sewer. The area is surrounded by highway business, residential estate, office and institutional, and planned development mixed use. So you can see it directly. It joins office-institutional zoning with the townhomes to the south area, as well as existing residential neighborhoods surrounding it. And then across Shotwell is the... It's a planned development mixed use. And then the B3 zoning along 70. Again, same considerations for a town council for special use permits. And again, a reminder that as you consider this and consider recommendations in the staff report, you may approve... If you decide to approve the SUP, you can approve them with the proposed conditions, add or remove conditions with agreement of the applicant, or deny the application upon finding that one or more of the findings factor not met. You can also decide if you believe that there's not enough evidence provided in the record for a finding fact to be met, you can also request additional information be brought back. The applicant has provided response to the four findings of fact from the application. Those are provided here on the next few screens for you. Just to briefly summarize, finding one is that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety. And again, the applicant has stated that they will have two connections to Shotwell Road. They are proposing to improve Shotwell Road along the frontage as required by the town code. They also speak to preservation environmental features and that they will be served by public water and sewer, which is currently in that area. And they're providing passive and active open space as well. The second finding relates to that the application meets all required specifications, conforms to the standards and practices of sound land use planning and the town code of ordinances and the other applicable regulations. Again, the subdivision plan, associated subdivision plan, has been reviewed against the Unified Development Code, and it does meet the requirements in the code. And it will also meet stormwater management regulations and has public water and sewer provided, and will also connect to the town electric utility. Third finding is that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding properties and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties around their neighborhood uses. The applicant in the application states that they are proposing single-family townhome developments with high-quality product, a mixture of brick facade, fiber cement, lap siding, board, and batten. And then finally, the last findings of the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town. And again, it is in compliance with the future land use plan, which shows high-density residential in this area. And it also meets the requirements of the current zoning district. Finally, if the council does decide to approve this special use permit, staff has worked with applicant to propose the following conditions. First two conditions are the same conditions that we have on all special use permits. And then third condition is that it will receive electricity from Town and Clayton Electric Utility. Fourth condition is relating to the architectural elevations and that all buildings will include a minimum brick masonry coverage of 25% on the front building facades. Fifth condition is relating to the common open space recreational areas being maintained and protected in perpetuity by a homeowner association. And finally, that right-of-way dedication and road improvements along the frontage of Shotwell Road be completed prior to the first certificate of occupancy. With that, the applicant is here and is prepared to answer any questions and may have a presentation themselves to make. As well as, I believe, there may also be members of the public here as well.
All right. Any questions for staff? Mr. Porter.
In regards to the streets internal into the community, are those going to be town-maintained streets? Or are they going to be private streets?
That... I will allow the applicant to answer during their presentation. I cannot remember for certain.
Okay. Another question. So it looks like in the applicant packet that we got, the amenities are going to be a picnic area, an open space, and maybe a nature trail?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And then I have some concerns regarding the traffic on Shotwell Road already. I know that they're doing some improvements in front of their, in that community. But what are... Do we know if the DOT has any plans for any additional improvements along Shotwell Road at any time?
I am not aware of any plans for improvements along Shotwell Road other than there is a potential for improvement of the Shotwell Road-US 70 intersection based on the town's LAP application. But other than that, I'm not aware of any other improvements. And I will just take a moment. I forgot to mention that Joshua Baird is also here to speak to the wastewater allocation for this project as well, which, if the council decides to approve the SUP tonight, the follow-up action would be to approve the wastewater allocation as well. So if you have any questions about the wastewater allocation, Joshua took the oath and is prepared to speak to that.
Okay. Back to my question. No, that's fine. No, thank you. Appreciate that. So there's improvements at the Shotwell 70 intersection. Is that going to be on both sides? Or is that only going to be on the Bojangles side? Just jog my memory of that.
I believe the plan would be for both sides of Shotwell as well as 70. I think it's all four quadrants. There would be some improvements mostly related to turn lanes at that intersection.
Okay. Thank you. Other question I had, I saw in condition number six regarding the fee and lieu chosen on the north side or Street B. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
That was something that, as the applicant has stated in their packet and I believe in the information, they are proposing fee and lieu in that section because they cannot... They would not be able to physically construct the improvements within their frontage. And they would... It would require them to... If they were to construct those improvements, they would have to likely go and get additional right-of-way from adjoining properties. And so in lieu of doing that, they propose to provide the payment in lieu so that as the rest of that, of Shotwell Road, that corridor, if in the future it is further widened or the property adjacent to this gets developed, they would then... We would then be able to use that payment in lieu towards that future improvement.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is regarding to the sidewalk in front of the community. It looks like there's a pretty substantial retaining wall there next to that sidewalk. Is it going to be the town's responsibility to maintain that retaining wall, since it is, I guess, in the right-of-way?
The retaining wall, and I believe, is said to be outside of the right-of-way and would remain the responsibility of the private, of the landowner to maintain that. I know that has been an issue that has come up, and there's been some discussions with the engineering department and through the TRC process. And we do not... Our practice is that we do not allow retaining walls inside the right-of-way.
Thank you. I don't think you have any more questions at this time.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Sims?
Yes, I have one. So you stated that they're going to make some improvements to the turn lanes on 70?
This... That's a DOT project that DOT and the town has partnered on to apply for LAP funding for that project.
Do we know roughly when it is?
We will find out in... We should find out in January if we receive the funding for that project. And if we do receive the funding, then we would expect construction to begin... We would expect the project would go out to bid late next fall with construction beginning winter, spring of 2024.
So you might not know this. It's just the answer to this, and it's fine. And if you can just get this finalized for me. But they have two entrances and exits, B Street and A Street. From B Street, which is closest to the 70 bypass there, do you know the distance between that exit there and that 71?
I do not. But again, the applicant's engineer is here and prepared to speak, and he may be able to answer that question.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else? For staff?
Yes, yeah, for staff. Sorry. One other question. In this particular, these site plans, it doesn't show the dentist office, adjacent dentist office. Do we have any idea, or maybe this is a question for the applicant, how close that dentist office is or their parking lot is to those... There's four apartments where the rear is facing that driveway and that parking lot?
I will let the applicant answer that question.
Thank you.
Yet again, a question for the applicant. All right. Thank you. We'll now turn the floor over to the applicant.
Mayor, council, good evening. Javier Haramio, BGE. I'm the civil engineer. 5440 Wade Park Boulevard, Raleigh, North Carolina. Myself, as the applicant, and the client developer are here tonight. Mr. Mike Neff, he's in the back. Happy to answer any questions between the both of us. But I wanted to start with answering a couple of questions, Councilman Casey, that you had regarding the streets for the subdivision. Right now, at least working with staff, we started this process about six months or so ago. These streets will be public. We will dedicate them as public streets to the town of Clayton. The developer, of course, will be responsible for construction of those. And then at the end of the day, we'll hand those over to the town via final plat. You had some questions about, or at least what we're bringing with this project in terms of city services, course, water, and sewer. We'll be asking the town to basically give full approval on that, specifically the wastewater allocation that will be following after this item tonight, and working with staff as well on trying to get that approved. The other things that we're also seeking for in support of this project, of course, is town of Clayton Electric, which we feel is important coming into this location, this area with this project. If you guys are familiar with this area, this site actually started out as a single-family development five, seven years ago. And you can see on an aerial that that site was graded, but for some reason did not move forward. Resi Belt, my client, has stepped in to try to improve this area and pick it up. Currently, right now, and it has been for quite some time, this location here has been zoned as R8, single-family residential. With us pursuing the higher-density option with townhomes, we can still pursue R8 zoning, however, with a special use permit, thus the reason for being here tonight. I think right now we're pursuing 68 townhome units for the community. We are looking to make some improvements for the open space active recreational area requirements. We look at having a little trail that's going to wrap around the outside to the west. I will say that this property is encumbered by quite a few things. Number one, we've got a floodplain that wraps around to the north. So that's already makes it a very challenging site or bounded with what we can do with those limits. Number two, we've got a riparian stream along the west side, the common west line between us and the real estate or what I would call residential estate lots, bigger lots due west of the stream. And so with that being identified as a jurisdictional stream, we have to hold a 50-foot Nus River buffer on our side as well. So we're encumbered there as well. So right now, you're looking at 14 acres. So of course, that gets reduced very quickly because of the floodplain and the riparian buffers. The other thing is, if you're aware of driving up and down Shotwell Road, there's a lot of topography in this area. It drops off pretty steep very quickly. So some of the challenges that we're up against, number one, the question about the retaining wall that was brought up is, you know, is that retaining wall going to sit in the right-of-way? We've been talking to Mr. Jonathan Jacobs about that retaining wall and with Ben as well. And one of the things that we had proposed was to put a cast-in-place retaining wall along the lot line because we can't have any encroachments into the right-of-way at the end of the day. Currently, today, it's a 60-foot right-of-way for Shotwell Road. Ultimately, it's got to be a four-lane divided with 110-foot right-of-way. And so that means we would be having to improve our half of that, which means extending the edge of pavement due west into our subdivision, adding curb and gutter and sidewalks as well. So what we're going to do to give ourselves a little bit of spacing, you can't see it here tonight, but if everything gets approved, as we hope it will, that when we get into engineering, we're going to be sliding that retaining wall closer into the subdivision along the rear of the lot lines. That gives us the opportunity to have a little bit nicer landscape buffer that we have to provide, which is currently today 20 feet. The other thing, let me see. What I... I think there was something else about the spacing between the subdivision and the... Well, two things. I think you had questions about the two driveways that we have shown. The one to the north, or what I would call northwest, that one lines up exactly with the driveway across the street for the Lion Spring Senior Assisted Living. So that one is there for that reason. It lines up directly across from each other. The second one to the south is meeting NC DOT spacing requirements. And I coordinated upfront when we were going through the layout of the subdivision with NC DOT. And I got direction from the district engineer in terms of how to get those spaced. Specifically, that northern one, he wanted to make sure that we maintain full axis movement through that driveway intersection there and provide a turning lane movement going northbound to turn left into the subdivision, and of course, southbound to turn right into the subdivision. The one to the south, he did not want turning movements. He just wanted ingress, egress out of that driveway. So that's what you see there today. I believe there is another question, too, about the reason we didn't go fee in lieu of... Our original thought was to go fee in lieu of for the entire frontage road improvements without really knowing what the DOT's plan was or the town to improve that whole section of Shotwell. It seemed to make sense to us to do a fee in lieu of instead of partially build this section here. I've heard, at least through residents calling in and also with our neighborhood meeting, that traffic is a huge concern on Shotwell. I don't know that what we are doing here with this development is making it even worse. But we, when going through the review and that neighborhood meeting, one of the best things that we had talked to Jonathan about is if there is any chance of doing fee in lieu of due north of the northern driveway as you curve heading north, where that floodplain that I mentioned earlier, there's a covert crossing that is there. The roadway section gets very, very narrow. Plus, there's a lot of trees there. If you're ever driving from north to south, it is difficult to see there. There's not a lot of sight distance there. So we felt us trying to come in and build something that is only going to restrict you again before you get to that covert made sense to propose a fee in lieu of and let DOT, the town of Clayton, figure out what to do there in a more safe manner for not only our development, but for that entire stretch coming from Highway 70 down Shotwell due south. Spacing between us and the... Spacing between us and the commercial building, I honestly don't off the top of my head. I should have probably measured that. Wasn't expecting that question. But I believe the driveway into that is a little bit further south. And I would say it's probably guessing a couple hundred feet at least between us and the southern drive that you see there. I believe I've answered all of the questions. If there's anything else, I'm happy to do my best to pick up something if I missed it.
Massage.
Thank you for answering those questions. And just to go to that measurement there, I just did a quick Google measurement and it looks like the back of those units is approximately 100 feet from the parking lot associated with that building, so.
With the parking lot, what about driveway to driveway?
Was that your question or were you more interested?
I was asking about the parking lot because my concern was kids bleeding out into the parking lot or playing in the parking lot.
Unfortunately, if I recall Ben correctly, there was no requirement for us to have fencing between us and the commercial site, right? And so at least right now, we don't have any fencing proposed. That may help mitigate some of that at this time. And there's really no other fencing requirements required for the rest of the subdivision as well.
Anyone else?
Actually, so if I could go ahead, I had a couple of questions to ask. So one of them was concerning since you brought up the fence and those units there. So I did have a concern and so just to, for everyone else who hasn't maybe looked at the site plan in as much detail, I'm talking about units one through four that are there in the bottom left corner.
Towards the south end?
Right. And I love the buffers and the natural areas that you've incorporated through the rest of the parcel, but I did have concerns there with as close as those units are to the road as well as to the adjacent parking lot. And there really is nothing there to be either a landscape buffer or a fence. And I understand you have met the requirements that the town has, but I wondered if that's something the applicant had considered or is willing to do.
So you're talking that little bit of frontage from the south, from that southern driveway due south, right, towards the commercial? Because we do have the 20-foot buffer that runs parallel to the right of way.
Yeah, I'm actually talking about behind units one, three, four, along the property line between those units and the parking lot.
And you were thinking some kind of buffering?
Yeah, well, just curious if the applicant had thought of putting either a fence or some landscaping there to serve as a barrier or if that's something they're willing to consider.
You know, once again, doing a fence, we haven't thought about it mostly because it was not requested of us from the staff for the whole project. So it may look a little bit off. Landscaping is definitely something worth considering. Happy to let Mike answer that and he can definitely.
Yeah, Mike Neff with Resi Build. So yeah, I mean, I think there, Javier, what's the space between the rear of those lots and the property line?
I would say it's about 15 feet.
15 feet?
Yeah.
I mean, we can do a fence if that's really what it comes down to. I will say with my experience, landscaping usually does more than a fence. Fence is quick, but if you put a fence up there, you're going to have open ends and kids are going to go around it. Holly trees or holly bushes, they don't usually go through, you know? So and they create a good barrier just like a fence, quick growing. And I think as you're driving, it's just a better, it's a better visual than a fence. So I mean, we can, you know, there's a buffer required there, I believe, isn't there?
No buffer for that one, for that side.
It's on the, it's on the frontage.
Just on the frontage.
Yeah. So I mean, if we needed to add some buffer trees of some sort there to create more of a barrier, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I appreciate that. And as far as adding that as an approval for condition, I can wait and hear from other people in the council just to make sure I'm not out of line here. I did have a couple more questions, if that's okay. Regarding the finding of fact, number four, the application will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town or violate the character of existing standards for development of the adjacent properties. I was just wondering in terms of those adjacent properties, which are generally single family homes on variably sized lots, I wondered if you could flesh that out. I believe in your application, it, you kind of, if I can go to that finding of fact here. You do mention that, you know, that the subdivision will meet or exceed the standards and, oops, I got the wrong one. My apologies here. You refer to that there's going to be a high quality product with a mixture of materials, which is, which is fantastic. But then it just says the new subdivision will not be detrimental to the adjacent properties or other similar uses. But I kind of wanted you to maybe drill down a little bit more to the fact that what we're talking about here is town, a townhome product versus the adjacent properties, which are single family home product.
So for me, what I can say is looking at what is being proposed by Resi Bild for the townhome, you know, they're two-story, single car garage. They've got some brick facade masonry components on the front side. And then for the most part, they've got some other elements like board and batten, fiber cement, siding on the front, the sides in the rear. I went across the street and looked at the subdivision that I think it's called Yellow Jacket Ridge, right across the street. And those appear to be single family, but they don't have any garages. They're just drive pads, I believe, for just parking. And and though you wouldn't have townhomes without garages because really, for me, I'm used to seeing townhomes with garages, at least a single car garage, in this case, single car garage. But you can see the front here, looking across the street and then maybe even going further south into some of the older neighborhoods, same thing. I think the quality of materials that they're using on the front of these homes definitely doesn't take, I think it helps the overall area as a whole add more value to it. I don't think we're trying to by any means take away from them. And but in a nutshell, I think that's, that's kind of my thought is what we're providing here is definitely a product that allows for people to park their vehicles in their garage and not have them sitting outside in front of the unit and not being able to see what you see here, which is masonry, some accents to the windows. I believe the, some of the ones across the street, hard to tell, but it looked like they were vinyl siding. And I know that's, that's one of those items that I think a lot of towns would prefer not to see, but it's still there as a viable product. And once again, it's, I think it's just the price point and where some of these homes likely fall and the money that the developer may, you know, want to invest in. But I hope that helps answer the question.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add to that. One of the added benefits is obviously the garages give a place for the garbage cans, give a place for those things that sit outside or alongside of the house. And then the other additional thing is that because they're townhomes, we, the outside areas, the grass, the landscaping are all maintained by the HOA. So you have a very consistent, very clean, every lot is exactly the same. They're all getting maintained at the same time versus even single family. And we do single family as well, and we do the exact same thing. So all the lawn maintenance and everything is included. So you're going to get a very well-maintained, well-looking neighborhood every time you drive through it, it's going to be the same.
And to finalize that, you know, the development is trying to improve within its community. It's a tight space. There's not a lot of space, especially because of the floodplain and the buffer. But the little walking trail that we're trying to add, the little gazebo slash benches that we're trying to add, you know, it, we would have tried to find a way to dedicate and dedicate for parks, but it was just too small of a project. It just, there was no way to do that. So I think that also helps as well in terms of what you're seeing here.
Thank you. Unless my colleagues here have further things to say about that finding of fact, I have, I actually wanted to ask a question about another finding of fact. Finding of fact number three, I wanted to jump to, if you don't mind, that the application will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties. So you have stated that, you know, that you are meeting finding of fact number three, and I wondered if you have any data or appraisals or anything like that to kind of document for us that it's not going to injure the value of the adjoining single family homes?
Good evening. How are you? So when we priced out the units in the subdivision, we wanted to get a product that was of the size that would equate to a price point of roughly $350,000 per unit. We used comps from adjacent subdivisions, units that were as similar to the ones we're building as possible. We came up with a price per square foot and allocated it to a build of 1420 square feet, which is essentially the size of these units, and we came out to that price point. So we felt like we wanted to get to a price point that was not only affordable, another $400,000 price point, but also kind of in line with what the price per square foot of the adjoining subdivisions are. So we were just right on par with that at 350.
Mayor, if I could, sir, could you give your name and credentials for the record, please?
Adam Stern. I'm with Strata SFR.
Okay. But what do you do and how are you qualified to make a statement?
Sure. So Strata SFR is a real estate development investment company. We are a licensed broker as well in the state of North Carolina. So we very often do price opinions on real estate that we either develop or that we sell.
And how long have you been doing this?
I've been doing it for 13 years. Strata SFR is a new business. It's been business since January of 2020.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Sims?
So I got a couple of questions under the finding of fact that the applicant will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located, were proposed, and develop according to the plans as submitted and approved. I asked, I asked a question earlier as far as, as you know, the distance from 70 to where, I think it's.
The north driveway?
It's the, yes, the forest driveway, B Street.
From the north driveway up to 70? I don't.
B Street to 70.
Yeah, I don't know the distance to answer a question, sir. I mean, I could definitely get back to you on that and, but I, right off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay. So in your opening statement, you stated that there were, in your statement, what you said, that there were concerns already with the traffic on Shotwell. In your opening statement, you stated that. What are those concerns with traffic that you're saying that there are?
Yeah, so in our neighborhood meeting, the concerns were just, there's a lot of traffic on Shotwell. And, okay, so what does that mean specifically? How many vehicles per day are on that road, you know? Or no specifics on that, just there was a lot of vehicles on Shotwell Road. People were concerned that, two things, it was nothing to do with this location, but the next street down, I think is, is it Amelia Church? Does that sound right? There's a signal due south of here. There was a concern from an individual that reached out to, to me. So one of the things, unfortunately, we tried to set up a neighborhood meeting for the first time via virtual. The calling number got transposed and we had no success. But there is a gentleman, I think his name was Steve Corbett, that reached out to me, called me multiple times, emailed me. And he was saying that he had huge concerns with that intersection. There's a signal there and for whatever reason, it's not set up to make right-hand turns. So people tend to pull up on that signal and just roll it and just roll it and just roll it. So that was one location, one concern that was brought up to me about that intersection. The second one, I think it was a resident right behind us, Mrs. White, her concerns were there's just a lot of traffic on Shotwell Road. I'm concerned, I'm very concerned that anybody that lives in this neighborhood, if they've got kids, there's a multi-use trail that's across the other side of the road. How are they going to get across? You know, there's so much traffic. We're concerned, we're concerned. So what we've done is, what we did is work with staff and just let them know, hey, this is the feedback that we got, the concerns that we got from neighboring residents. But I don't know that there's really been, we're fixing, if all goes well and we get approval tonight, going to be submitting engineering plans this week. At that point, you know, we'll be sitting down with engineering staff and going through their review process and probably going back and forth with them on, you know, what they like about this, what we need to improve. But I can't seem to find anything that tells me this section of road is either dangerous or there's been accidents every week or that somebody's, you know, lost their life on this stretch of road. I've really only heard there's lots of traffic. I haven't been able to get from anybody substantial, you know, support that says this is exactly what's happened. You know, we had five accidents last month. This year we had, you know, to date, we had 30 accidents. It's just, there's a lot of traffic on this road.
So just, just checking, I hear what you're saying and I'm getting, just, just checking.
Sure.
So there's no, even though you heard those concerns, there was no traffic, TIA, traffic analysis or anything like that?
So one of the, so one of the requirements by your UDC is that if, and I, I reached out to staff about this, the planner that was working with us is no longer with the town. But one of the requirements per the UDC is, look, if you develop a subdivision, 100 lots or greater, then we're going to require you to do a TIA. We are less than that. There's other thresholds as well that the engineering staff can enforce, you know, typically 100 peak hour trips, AM or PM, if we exceed that or 1,000 trips per day. We weren't asked of that. We were just told, hey, have it in an email that you're less than 100 lots, no need to worry about a TIA. So we proceeded forward that way. We've gotten up to this point after four reviews with that premise that we're okay not to have to worry about a TIA.
Absolutely. I just said, again, my main thing is even in your, you saying that in your opening statement, that there must be some concern. So I just thought that from a public safety standpoint, so we can try to make sure that we got everybody thumbs up that it might have been, you know, because I'm quite sure you guys are all about the community and all about trying to, you know, make sure that we do these certain things and, you know, just from that standpoint, because I understand what the UDO says.
In my view, I don't know that there's any concerns here. Once again, just hearing from what I've heard from people call in and tell me, you know, we're concerned about traffic, that's all I've heard.
And one last quick thing here is, so as I look at B Street and A Street, will people be parking in front of the townhomes on the streets themselves?
There's certainly space for that. I mean, we can't control that, right? Unfortunately, it's a public street. We, to answer your question, we don't have designated parking on the streets for people that live in this community. The only parking that we have run our calculations on based on the site plan and the site data calculation table is one, two parking spaces, one in the garage, one in the driveway, and that's it. We haven't run any or assumed any parking calculations for on-street parking.
Is that street wide enough to accommodate a car on each side and a fire truck down the middle?
It is, so this is a 50-foot right of way, the town's minimum, and it's a 27 back-to-back. So you figure about eight feet on average either side for, if you had a vehicle parked on either side, you're looking at 16 feet. That leaves you, what, nine, 11 feet of space between two vehicles? Now, you've got a large SUV or a big F-250, it may be a little bit tight for.
What about a fire truck?
For a fire truck to get through. Yes, sir. Yeah. It may not be possible.
Is that concerning to you?
But, but once again, if you look at the site plan, the likelihood, I don't know how you control that, maybe by putting up no parking signs. But the likelihood of people parking with the closeness of the driveways, I doubt that's going to happen. Otherwise, it'd be blocking somebody's residential driveway into their home. There's some gaps in between the buildings where you may be able to find some parking, maybe one, but, but to answer your question, I don't know that technically there would be no space if you had vehicles on both sides to get a fire truck through.
Yes.
But I will say that, you know, having gone through the review, I don't believe the fire department had any concerns from what I recall in terms of access, maneuverability through this subdivision. So they seem to be just fine with that and not have any issues.
Thank you for those thorough answers. To build on that particular question, because we've seen this as an issue in similar developments in town and understanding that you've done what you can do to meet the code and, and a tight space to work with there as well. But just out of curiosity for, for this council to consider, if, if we were to, would you be open to signing? open to signing, using no parking signs on one side of the street in this development to help alleviate that?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a problem with that. I'm not sure what the, what the city's, on a standard residential sheet that's 50-foot, do you allow parking?
Some, some not.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I would, with that being said, I mean, with this typical right-of-way of everywhere else, if there's parking on one side, I feel like we certainly can add signs if that's really what it comes down to, but I would, my personal feeling is that it's, you know, it's typical of a, any other residential street that may have on-street parking.
I beg to differ, just a little bit more, because of the density and the...
Actually, actually, the density is actually, it's a challenge of a lot of people's minds in density. You go to big cities, there's lots of on-street parking where you can barely fit a car between two streets, and the fire trucks are fine, they figure a way through. I, you know, I feel like that's available, most people aren't going to block the roads. Usually, there's parking on one side, usually if one person parks on one side, there's going to be enough room for a car to get through. Typical, you know, drive lines, drive lanes are, you know, 10 to 12-foot wide. So, I mean, if you've got 10-foot, we've got 27 back-to-back. Typical parking spots are nine, you know, parking line to parking line, not including the new parking spots that are like seven and a half, right, where you can barely fit your car in. So I don't have, I'm not opposed to putting signs up if that's, if that's what's needed, but I don't, I don't know if it's really necessary.
You know, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't disagree with you on that either, but, you know, like, we just, when you, when you were referring to people, if they park on one side, then more than likely, they're not going to park across it, but they will, they will, because we just saw this with the Harvest Festival in Clayton, and I live four blocks over on Smith Street, and I had people on both sides, I could barely get my Nissan Murano down the street, there was no way in hell that the fire department could have ever gotten to my house or my neighbor's house. So, you know, just to, just to say that people are going to park where it's easy and convenient, and they're not thinking about, oh, can a fire truck come down the street or not? But, you know, as an investor in that community, because I'm totally all about how good-looking this is, this project with what you've done with the facade and all of that, I would still want to make sure for my $400,000 investment that a fire truck could get down here when I needed it or my neighbor needed it.
And that's part of the reason why you usually have two accesses, and usually, in most subdivisions, you can have all these at a den end with only one access. So you do have two points of access to the subdivision, to what, I mean, all of, almost all the, all the lots have two points of access, which is not typical in most subdivisions of this size.
True. Mr. Thompson?
Just a few questions. So you stated in the presentation that you had traffic concerns, and that there were traffic concerns from local residents, including Ms. White. I just want to confirm that you heard these concerns, but there was no effort made to get a traffic impact analysis, and there's not been one done, correct?
Correct.
Other question is, for your parking, I understand, you know, there's room in the garage, and then is there room in the driveway for a car to park that does not go over top of the sidewalk or reach the tail end of the car out to the street?
So the UDO very specific states that you have to maintain 25 feet from the back of the sidewalk. We are holding 25 feet from the right-of-way, so there's plenty of space, and we did that for a specific reason, to have the space.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question, thank you. Let's go back to the TIA and the reason why you didn't get a traffic study.
So we asked staff about that, and typically, on any project that I pursue or work with staff on, that's typically one of the first things we ask, based on what you see here on the site plan, is there a need to do a TIA? They're going to have a little bit more of a handle on what's going on in the area, right? The TIA can involve many things. It can involve just the two driveways, it can involve the next intersection down, it can involve the next intersection five miles down. So we asked a question, it came back with, hey, no need to worry, you're less than 100 lots, we're fine with that. And so we went with that to answer a question, yes, sir.
That's fine, just needed that clarified for the record.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Casey?
I have a couple of questions. The square footage of these homes, I guess, looked in the plans, it's anywhere between 1,900 to 3,500, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Also, I saw the walking trail, which I like that. Looks like the walking trail is going through the Neuse River Repairian Buffer, is that common practice? And what is going to be done with that walking trail? Is there a lot of grading? I mean, what's, is it a paved trail?
I think we're looking to make it a very soft trail, you know, crushed stone, nothing like concrete, nothing like asphalt, just something very natural to the environment versus trying to pave like the rest of the subdivision, right, streets, driveways. So we're trying to stay very natural to the environment, plus maintaining that repair and buffer in the floodplain as well.
Yeah, I have, through my experience, used what I call single-ground mulch. If you use your typical mulch that you obtain for your household beds and those type of things, it will travel during the rain. I'm sure everybody's well aware that if you don't have edging, it floats out into your yard. The single-ground mulch is actually a product of removing any trees, so they can single-ground mulch it, they're bigger chunks, and it goes in real well in the natural areas. Starts out a little fluffy, but kind of squishes down and just becomes a good solid base for a natural area that doesn't really move.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for the developer? Mr. Thompson?
I just want to confirm with, the gentleman spoke to the real estate value, are you a real estate appraiser, or is it your firm that is not?
No, sir. Yeah, I'm a licensed real estate broker in the state of North Carolina. I valued it based upon best practices that I give for any client doing a broker price opinion.
Thank you.
Ms. Archer?
I just wanted to clarify one additional item. So you did speak with DOT about the location of the two entrances, entrance, exit.
Yes, ma'am. So what I did is, I'm trying to remember Sam's, I think his first name is Sam, Lawthorn? Lawhorn?
Hawthorne, maybe.
With DOT.
Right.
So I sent him a copy of the site plan, asked him to look at it, and he gave me direction via email. You have a couple of options, this was one of those options, about maintaining full movement at that Northern Drive, left turn, right turn, and then ingress of, or single ingress/egress for that South driveway. So that's what you see there, based on his direction, and happy to forward that email to staff if they need it.
Okay, I do appreciate you seeking that input and, you know, running that by someone. The reason I was asking, so you don't have like a transportation engineer or anybody here with you for this topic, yeah?
No, ma'am. And once again, typically, when we start out with something like this in the very preliminary stages, this is not final design, this is our intent to show you what's, what we are capable of designing and building. The next step, you know, getting approval tonight would be, all right, this is what we're going to work on final design with staff to actually go to construction. But to answer your question, typically, when we start on the early stages like this, if a TIA is not required, we always make sure that we follow up with DOT to get their input on something like this. And they're usually very good about, yes, I'm happy to review something, give you our feedback based on what I see and concerns that I'm aware of. Once again, district engineers like this in this area already know what's going on in the area, they can already tell you, this is probably the best thing to do with what's going on with Shotwell.
Thank you for that response. My, my question, my main concern when I looked at that entrance that's closer to the Amelia Church Road, which is the lower-left entrance there, so someone, there's not the left turn lane there, and I'm guessing you did that probably because of DOT's engineer didn't recognize that and...
Correct, correct.
Right. And so I'm just, I'm picturing somebody coming from that intersection, the Amelia Church-Shotwell intersection, and wanting to turn left into that entrance, there's not very many feet, I mean, it's probably 400 feet away from that intersection, so I'm just imagining someone trying to turn left there, they're not able to turn left right away due to traffic, oncoming traffic, traffic stacks up a lot of times at that intersection, and so then in my mind, I'm picturing, oh my gosh, so then that lane of Shotwell, you know, no, everyone's stacking up behind them waiting to make that left. So, you know, I know this is a difficult site to work with, I'm glad there are the two entrances, but, you know, that, I just foresee that being a nightmare. I mean, I travel through that intersection quite a bit, so is why I'm more familiar with it.
Once again, when we get into final design, we got to run through DOT permitting anyway. You know, we can definitely let them know, or staff can let them know as well.
Now, I'll add on that, typically DOT is going to force you to... I don't know why it keeps going back to the other one. Typical DOT, if you have a, if they have a movement that they only want one direction, they typically force you to make that a directional only using some sort of device. So I foresee DOT probably coming back on that and having a concrete median or something, forcing that as a right-in, right-out only, they typically don't leave them open for that reason, to make sure that people aren't turning there.
Thank you.
Mr. Casey?
This question was probably going to be for town staff, but I'm just going to ask it right now. We've seen a few of these townhome projects like this before, most of the times, these are private streets, I'm just kind of confused why this one was just determined to be a public street versus a private one. Y'all may know the answer, staff, y'all may know the answer, I'm just kind of curious.
When we started it, it just made sense, public streets. Staff, from what I recall, when we went through review cycles, and we went through four of them, they didn't bring up any concerns, public versus private. So I don't know that we would benefit much from going with a private street, because that means the HOA would have to maintain it, keep up with it. Plus, you know, we have public water, public sewer in the streets today, which is a requirement to be able to move forward with this development, so.
And I can clarify that a little bit, too. Town, the Unified Development Code actually really encourages public streets in most developments now. Where we do still see some private streets, it's generally when they're using them also as parking, as a, primarily a parking area, but for something like this where there, there's clearly off-street parking driveways for the uses, we do really push that to be the public streets, especially since our utilities are under there and it avoids running into the, instance of having a private street with public utility easement. Also, just real quick, wanted to clarify on the TIA question, by code, a transportation impact analysis is not required because they did not hit the minimum thresholds in our code. Our code has minimum thresholds of 100 trips generated in any hour or 1,000 trips per day, and this size development does not meet that threshold.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for developer? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'll now give the floor for anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Please step forward, state your name for the record, and sign the document.
So my name is Jesse Corbett, live at 1020 Ridge Drive, just outside of city limits. So my presentation here is going to be a little different, I think it'll finally get to a very serious point. I'll start off saying that I'm not objecting to the, to the development, but I do have some rather serious concerns. I brought with me here my first cousin and hearing assistant, because I don't hear well at all, but I followed 20% of what was said, so I'll try to do this thing. And I've got something I'd like to pass to council, a copy of what I'm trying to say, so. Can you do that?
Sure.
I think it's a copy there for everybody. So I'll start off, over the past 20 years, my hearing has degraded so badly, it's driven me away from my recliner into my office with a, you know, a good book or interesting book. And I'll share with you one of these books, it's a recent book about engineering disasters. Appears to be off-subject while we're doing here, but I'll finally get to the subject.
Well, you know, in the, in time, I'm going to have you, I'm going to ask you to get to your point more quickly than so much preface, because...
That's fine.
I need you to cut to the gist of it, that's what I'm trying to say in a nice way.
Okay, so I can get to it quickly, but you can review what's said or whatever.
Absolutely, yes.
So quickly to the point. So in December 15th, December 30th, 2015, a 12-year-old child, Gerardo Galvin, was trying to cross Lombard Street, 1,001 South Lombard, from his home at Alda Mobile Home He was not able to get across the street, he was killed by a car coming down Lombard. Now, we fast-forward another four years to March 21st, 2019, so I can say that Gustavo Armunt Valades, 18-years-old, trying to cross Lombard Street, trying to get to school, was killed. So it was a Spanish-American philosopher, a famous one, George Santanilla, that said, "Those who ignore history are condemned to repeat it." Now, that's my point. The kids crossing Lombard on the way to a nearby school need a safe way to get across the street. Now, on to these 68 townhomes. Again, I am not against building the townhomes, but a safe way needs to be provided for the kids living in those townhomes to get across Shotwell to get to the nearby school. So that's, that's my point.
Any questions or comments?
So I would like the council members to kind of go through that and maybe give me a response via email, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
So I really would like to see something done, a safe way to get across the street. I don't know if it's a crosswalk, if it's a tunnel, or something, but they need, we don't need any more kids killed on Lombard as well as Shotwell. Thank you.
Yeah, and, you know, I am very respectful of your thoughts, and, you know, I think we all struggle with that, because clearly, those two instances that you spoke of, they are, they were not created for people to walk across. Just like at the end of Main Street here, going into Champion Street, we don't have any crosswalks in that area, because we don't want to encourage people to walk across Highway 70. For decades, Clayton High School, every beginning of the year, the principal would say in the assembly, do not cross this side of highway to walk over to McDonald's, you know? And unfortunately, kids made those choices anyway, and parents allowed those kids to make those choices anyway. You know, it really is not a requirement of a developer to have to put... You know, it really is not a requirement of a developer to have to put in these additional safety measures, because it is presumed that parents will teach kids, "Don't walk across this busy street if it's not where it's pedestrian-friendly." So I'm with you 100% in that we need to make sure that we're looking out for the safety of the kids. But at the same time, I think we have to be fair to realize that, you know, some of this has happened by accident and, and because they made a bad choice to walk into a busy road that wasn't marked as a pedestrian crosswalk or pedestrian-friendly, that kind of thing.
Well, I hear you say it, but I'm not asking the developer to do it. If he wants to step up and do it, that's fine.
Sure.
But if he doesn't, I think one of you guys needs to step up and do it, or see to it that it's done, or make some effort to provide a crosswalk for Lombard and consider one for Shotwell. I mean, it's proven, two kids have died on Lombard.
Yeah.
And another one is going to die if something's not done.
Very good point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Johnny.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Corbett, I'm happy to respond to you via email as you requested, and if you could just write down your email and maybe leave it with staff, that, oh, it's on my apologies.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me give my concerns. Like Mr. Corbett, I'm not here to try to convince you not to let townhomes be built. Townhomes are going to be whether I care for it or not. So that, and they do look much better than the ones across the street, so that is a strong plus. In 2003, my dad addressed this group of people before you. And I found this the other day because he kept everything. And so a little bit of this, that my concerns are, I'm going to read, and this thing that was his concern may not be a concern again, and the developer may be able to tell me, oh, that's being taken care of. And...
Ma'am, could we get your name for the record?
I'm sorry. My name is Ann Stevenson White.
I assume everyone knew you, but we still didn't.
1016 Ridge Drive. I am now living in the house that my parents had before they passed. My dad's concern, which I guess now has become my concern, is stormwater problems that might exist. And I'll tell you that potential problem. There's a branch divined in the property in question from my property, and my property joins this land along the branch for 535 feet. All of the road water on both sides of Amelia Church Road runs into this branch, and therefore, when it rains, the water flows to the fullest extent of these ditches, causing the branch to overflow and flooding this property for an estimate of more than 30 feet. This is the condition at the present time. The sewer line runs across the branch and parallel with the branch. The property in concern, we've already noticed, is sloped very steeply toward the branch, and my concerns is, I want to make sure that the developer plans, what he plans to do with the excess stormwater that will be created by paved streets and drives, because the water is going to run downhill. And if that does happen that way, then I'm afraid that my property will be flooded more. And so that's one thing. Another thing is, I'm not sure, I know there's a septic easement there. I'm not so, I'm not sure how far that septic easement goes. And I know it's already been addressed because that is a creek, stream, whichever word, that that is addressed, that that cannot be touched, or the meandering of the stream tried to be fixed. But I am concerned about the sewer lines, because I have, I understand that in some parts of town, that the sewer lines are not big enough anymore for the amount of sewage that's going to flow through. So with 68 townhomes, that's a considerable amount, and I hope that everybody's thinking about, who's going to be responsible for that? The town? There was, I did participate in the Zoom meeting a few weeks ago. I didn't feel that I profited any from that meeting, but I did participate. The only neighbor to participate, but I did that. We talked about the traffic with Amelia Church Road. Well, I'm not so concerned about, as concerned with the traffic on Shotwell, because, you know, let's figure it doesn't really affect me unless I go that way. But on Amelia Church Road, where the traffic light is, and it backs up and goes down to Ridge Drive, which is landmark, where I live, sometimes now it takes me 10 minutes to sit there and wait, because if I want to go left, I've got to wait, make sure it's clear in both directions. And sometimes that's a nightmare, waiting for it to finally, finally get to a position that I can go out safely. Well, if I'm adding this much more traffic, and I'm not saying to all those people, but I imagine that everybody's going to have two cars, not just one car, so it's not like 68 cars. So a lot of that traffic's going to be on Amelia Church Road. When in the heck am I ever going to get out? I try not, on Fridays, I try not even go into town, because it takes so long to get to town. I try to schedule things so I don't go that way on Fridays. And so if that's now a daily thing, you know, face it, the quality of my life will deteriorate a little bit because I'm waiting and waiting. And I figure at my age, I don't have as much time to wait as some of you do. So I don't want to wait unnecessarily. And I try to, if I've got to wait somewhere, I try to take a book with me, but when you're in traffic and you're waiting for that, you really can't sit there and read, because I don't like to waste time. I'm not a time waster. Another thing is that there is so little space on this tiny piece of land. That has a steep section, it has to have the berm and stuff already done it. So it's a tiny piece of land. And on that tiny piece of land, there are going to be a lot of children. I expect there are going to be a lot of children. And when you have all those children, and they see three acres of land behind them with all these trees, I don't blame them. I'd be enticed to go on that land and play in the woods and heaven's just to betsey if they start a campfire on my land. So I am very, very concerned about that, because I would love to invite them on my land, but I'm not going to, and, because I'm responsible for that. And so I really do not want them to be over there. I asked at the Zoom meeting if it was possible to maybe put a privacy fence across the land of those neighbors that are joining it, and that was kind of poo-pooed real quickly, like, and I know it's one of these things, it's not required, not required. I've heard that a lot. And sometimes we try to be good neighbors, even if it's not required to be a good neighbor. Sometimes we try to go out of our way a little bit, that if everybody's happy, then what a great way of going through life. You know, we should be trying to make our neighbors happy. That's why I'm not trying to prevent the development of this land. I'm not trying to do that. But I think that we need to be, you need to be also conscious of other people who have been there for a long, long time, and be conscious of what their needs are, maybe. But I was told that the stream meanders, and so they couldn't really put up a fence. I don't know why fences can't meander too, but that's what I, that was just the thought I was given. They said he would go back to the owner, but I'm not sure that that happened. Let me make sure I've taken care of all my concerns. Yep. I think that that takes care of all my concerns. I appreciate you listening to an old retired school teacher, and thank you for your patience with me, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? All right. No one else wishing to speak in opposition or give opportunities for a rebuttal from the applicant? Anything else you wish to add?
Mayor, council, thank you once again for your time tonight. Definitely appreciate the citizens' input, the neighbors. Like I mentioned before, I was able to talk to Mr. Corbett early on, Mrs. White as well. So thank you once again for your time.
All right. All right. Any other questions from council for the applicant or staff? Hold on.
One last thing, if I may. Mrs. White had mentioned something about stormwater and being concerned about drainage, and typically, the biggest items we always deal with in engineering are drainage, grading, and then utilities. Drainage, most definitely, is always a big concern to us, especially with any development we do, new development. In this particular case, you will see a stormwater control measure that we've planned for, and we'll definitely make sure that any post-develop runoff is mimicking or below pre-development conditions. So that's the whole reason for having that stormwater control measure that you see there towards your northwest.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Archer?
Just in reviewing my notes, I wanted to confirm with the applicant that there was, you were amenable to, if it does come up, two conditions, and one was adding landscaping behind units 1 through 4, and the second was adding no parking signs to one side of the streets.
I think Mike was definitely fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right. I'll now call council into deliberation. Mr. Thompson?
A few things. I have a lot of heartache that we had a neighborhood meeting where citizens expressed concerns about traffic, and then the applicant says they're aware there were concerns about traffic, and that staff was aware of a neighborhood meeting that had concerns about traffic, but nobody did anything about traffic. It was just, this is our requirement, it's less than this number, it doesn't meet the threshold. Well, it may not meet the threshold, but if you've got citizens that have concerns about traffic, even the developers aware of concerns about traffic, then to me, I don't, I think this is one of those situations where the, it's shame on us for not doing anything about traffic, and for not asking for a traffic impact analysis, or for not asking for a letter from DOT that says, "From this stretch of road to this stretch of road, this development is not going to affect that." I, I think, you know, we've got to start looking big picture. And I don't know, you know, I feel like this applicant has done their job and has met their requirements, you know, that our staff has put on them. You know, I think they're, and they're amenable to additional conditions imposed by us. But I think that there's a bigger picture here that we've got to address. You know, if this development comes, goes through, there's a bigger picture that we've got to address involving, you know, when we have these concerns, what are we doing about them? And, you know, this, this whole traffic thing comes up with all of them, and, you know, what happens when somebody wants to go next to this one with 90? Well, that's less than 100, so there's no traffic impact analysis. And then the next development over wants to put in 75? Well, that's less than 100. Look at the combined effect of what we're doing. So I feel like, from the deliberation standpoint, that, that this applicant has done what they were asked to do, and I don't have any, you know, I don't know that we can ask anything else of them, but I think we need to be cautious as we move forward, that when, when people, when applicants, when citizens, when people have these concerns, that we do something about them.
Mr. Sims?
Yes, so I just want to, first of all, applaud the applicant for the concessions and things that you guys have said that you would do. I really appreciate that. It shows a partnership of willingness to try to move forward. With that being said, I'm going to piggyback a little bit off of what Jason said. I can't, under the number one finding of fact, due to what, again, and that actually came out of the applicant's mouth as far as the traffic, I understand what the requirement says, but as you said, that you know that there's an issue with traffic there, I would feel comfortable in having a traffic analysis done in that, that area, because at the end of the day, even from the public outcry, as far as some of the things that have taken place in the past, we want to make sure that we ensure that we're, making sure we're encompassing a better future as we look to continue to do these things. So with all the other findings of fact, I'm fine with, but I have issues as far as when, I don't think we meet number one as far as public safety, in knowing that is 100% good to go as far as from a public safety standpoint.
Have a few comments, too. First, I want to thank the applicant. I felt like the finding of fact number two, they are willing and wanting to go above and beyond our design standards, especially with the size and square footage of these townhomes, also the type of construction, the material you're using. You are bringing, you're raising the bar. You gave some examples to some nearby, you know, developments that, that are not going to be as, as nice as this one that you, that you're building. So I appreciate that. I want to talk regarding the two, Mr. Corbett, Ms. White. Thank y'all. Your concerns definitely are heard. Mr. Corbett, I was obviously thinking about the traffic, because Shotwell Road is a very well-traveled road, but then also, you know, the children in the, in that community, they're going to walk to the community center, so they're going to walk across Amelia Church Road to go to the community center, and they're also, people probably going to try to walk to the shopping center, get their groceries or get their food. I feel like Shotwell Road is kind of a hodgepodge of mismatched sidewalks and stuff, and we really should have done, and need to do a better job of just figuring that out as, as a town, and also, you know, working with development on that. So I feel like, you know, with finding of fact number one, that is a concern to me. I don't have the answer, though, but I just appreciate thoughts on that. The other thing I had in mind, too, is if we were to move forward with this project, there's obviously going to be some substantial construction improvements to Shotwell Road in front of the development, and I could just see the fear of it being a one-way, one-lane road for a week or so, and then people having to just sit there and just build traffic upside. Prefer that maybe even add another condition at the applicant's, okay, if it just works with town staff, and maybe do that construction, or those road improvements on off-peak hours. The only challenge with that is understanding there's a, there's a neighborhood nearby, too, so if it's at night, I don't want to keep people up at night as well, but then again, I don't want there to be a massive traffic jam during the construction phase of that, of that street.
Anyone else? Ms. Archer?
This is a, is a tricky one, and what I, what's going through my mind right now is, you know, we've asked for certain things, and they have been willing to meet us on, on those, and then I go back to the findings of fact, and as a couple of you stated, our concerns about finding of fact number one. At this point, I'm going to say, for my part, I believe the applicant has met finding of fact number one, and I'm basing that on the fact that they reached out to DOT for an interpretation about traffic, and they, they've offered to provide that determination to us. They've also mentioned conversations with staff, which, you know, we can trust that those happened as well. And I really feel like, while we all have valid concerns up here about finding of fact number one, it really comes down to our own ordinance getting in the way of what we feel like is the best next step forward. And then in terms of the concerned citizens who spoke, I appreciate that. I appreciate public input here. I just, I want to remind them as well that because of the nature of these special use permits, the testimony that we hear has to be from... permits, um, the testimony that we hear has to be from someone who's considered an expert on that subject matter. So while we value everything you have said and, and all your input, when it comes down to decision time, we have to, we have to base this on factual information that we receive from experts. So I wanted you to know that so that you did not feel dismissed by us.
Anyone else? I just want to go back to the, uh, Mr. Corbett's point of what happened. Did any, was there any outcome from what took place on Lombard Street? And am I mistaken, and did, did there not become a crosswalk there? Is it not striped right there almost between Alta and the church? There's no crosswalk at all between? It's at the stoplight. Yeah, so nothing was done. And again, I think probably, not making excuses, but I just think nothing was done because that would, you know, encourage kids just to be more active in crossing that road, which is very sad because the sidewalk, I can't let you talk. The sidewalk is on the opposite side of the street, you know, very poor planning, uh, on behalf of, of, but of course, that's been out there since Clayton Primary School was created, you know? But I think there's, that's a definite, you know, concern as Clayton continues to grow and prosper. You know, that's gonna be more dangerous pedestrian walking or bicycling. What about up there at the community center? Are there crosswalks at the, at Shotwell and Amelia Church Road? Yeah. And yet again, because we're not wanting to encourage walking in high-traffic area? Well, we can't control children, that's a parent's job. Right.
Sidewalk ends at Shotwell, dead ends right at that intersection.
Yes, and there's one across the street. Yeah. But there's nothing that allows people to walk across, and it probably shouldn't be. All right. All right. So with that, I'll, um, let Council decide what they want to do so we can move on.
So do we go through each finding of fact?
In this case, it sounds like there may be a difference of opinion, so yes, I'd recommend going through each finding of fact.
Let's see, would that come in the form of a motion? Okay. And excuse one more question, and we would vote on each, we would...
On each step?
Okay.
Each of the findings.
Okay. Well, then in that case, um, I would like to make a motion to approve special use permit And just a moment while I get the findings of fact. That finding of fact number one, that the application will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plans as submitted and approved. And would I say all those in favor or opposed to that finding of fact?
I'd turn that part back over to the mayor.
I'm like, the blind here, the blind here.
In 19 years of being the mayor, and now you trying to run my show?
Please run.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Casey?
Um, I had mentioned earlier about a condition regarding the road improvements and then working with town staff and it being done either at night or on off-peak hours due to, obviously what's a big concern of us as council, being the traffic on that road. Does the applicant agree to that, uh, condition?
So, Mike Neff again, uh, that's a state road.
Correct.
Uh, so any conditions with construction would be part of the state approval. I don't think you guys can dictate that because it's a state road. And I, I'm not necessarily disagreeing, I just, I don't want you guys to put something out there that's gonna be hard to make it work with the DOT.
I understand, but who's making the improvements to, in front of there? Is it the DOT making those improvements, or is it?
We would be making the improvements, but through our DOT encroachment permit, there would be requirements set within the DOT encroachment permit of when we could do those
If I can, um, generally for, when, even when private developments making the improvements, as Mr. Neff said, there's a DOT encroachment permit that does provide timeline restrictions. Generally speaking, DOT does not allow work to begin on roads like this before 9:00 AM or, and it must be complete by 4:00 PM as far as any work that would require closing a lane of travel or moving a lane of travel. Those are the general requirements that we see. The town can request additional, um, we can request that they do additional thi, you know, there's additional restrictions. However, as Mr. Neff said, it would be, it would not be enforceable by DOT, but it could be enforceable by the town.
So we can make a request of DOT, and it can be, uh, ultimately to the discretion of DOT that that be, that happen?
Correct.
Okay, would the applicant be okay with a town, or working of town staff on any additional request to DOT to have that done in an off-peak time, so it doesn't impact the citizens as they're, you know, trying to make their way through that road?
I will say that we would be okay with that, um, but we usually don't control it. It's 100% DOT that dictates that. Um, I will add, just to everybody's concern, is we are doing obviously a lot of improvements to that side, and we're doing more, what's on the site plan, we're actually doing more than what we would need just for our development, right? So if you look at the plan, we've got a right turn in, right, a right, right turn in and a left turn in at the one intersection, and a right turn in and a right out. But you have, if you look at your plan, you have that area that shows striping. That's all roadway that we're putting in that we don't necessarily have to. With that being said, all of our widening is on our side. So the majority of this widening during the construction process, the two lanes are gonna be, remain where they're at and open, um, pretty much all time because it's all on the shoulder.
Okay, and, and I, I saw those improvements on the site plan, and I appreciate the developer making those improvements. Obviously, the concern I had when thinking about this is, if that, if that's a one-lane road for more than the extended period of time, everybody knows what a, a pain that's gonna be. So just, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm open to it. It's just, it's a function of, you know, really down to what DOT allows us to do and not do.
I understand, thank you.
And you don't have to have their permission to have the town play with DOT, so. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of, um, the first finding of fact. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion to approve finding of fact number two for 2022-67-SUP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of finding of fact number two. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion to approve finding of fact number three for 2022-67-SUP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for finding of fact number three. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, I just thought of a question, sorry. I know we're on the last finding of fact, and there are two conditions that the applicant has agreed to in addition to the conditions that staff had originally proposed. So would I tack those on to this fourth finding of fact or deal with those separately?
I would, I would suggest dealing with them separately, get, get a vote on number four, and then make a motion based on the approval of the permit based on the findings of fact, and, and include those conditions.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve finding of fact number four for, uh, 2022-67-SUP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval for finding of fact number four. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion for approval of 2022-67-SUP with the conditions noted in the staff report, as well as two additional consideration, uh, conditions. One would be to add no parking signs to one side of Street A and B. The other would be to add landscaping to the area behind units one through four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with conditions. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, now we're gonna need to, for you to deal with the adoption of the wastewater
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Joshua Baird, Engineering Director. Per the current policy, requests for greater than 10,000 gallons per day must, uh, require an action by Town Council. Specific project, as earlier noted, 68 units, based on our flow reduction letter of 250 gallons per day. Total request is for 17,000 gallons per day. The current policy also requires the project to be scored, uh, based on the scoring, and the project did score a total of 60 points and met the minimum 50 required for the staff to bring it before Town Council for recommendation. Uh, this specific project, similar to all of the, uh, other projects, uh, is based on a phased approach, uh, or a timeline and schedule such that when the wastewater does become available, uh, based on current capacity and trends within our waste treatment plant. Uh, with that, staff is recommending the approval of it for the 17,000 with a date. Uh, permits can be submitted for July of 2024 for the project to move forward. So this does allow the applicant to continue with CDs, uh, in the interim, and then, uh, permits can be signed on that July 2024 date. So with that, I'll take any questions on the wastewater approval.
Mr. Thompson? Yes, sir.
I just want to address, um, Ms. White's concern that is the, the infrastructure in the ground adequate and capable of taking this wastewater?
As part of the CD process, the town standards and specifications does have requirements that, uh, that is looked at and does account for the total flow in those pipes, and will be evaluated as part of CD process.
Any other questions for staff? All right, now entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the wastewater resolution 2022-89.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of wastewater resolution 2022-89. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, up next under new businesses, historical collections policy.
Hello, Mayor, Staff, and Council. I'm Joy Garrettson, Library Director at the Hoka Ellington Memorial Library. Um, I would like to say that we have books on, audio books available through Libby, so if you're ever stuck in traffic, you don't have to pull out a real book, you can just listen, um, with your app, and you can do that before you ever start driving. So, um, with that said, I wanted to talk to you quickly about, um, our, uh, historical collections policy. This is a new, um, policy through the, um, that we have just, um, pushed through, um, my library board. Um, so prior to the past fall, the library did not have a specific collections policy for our history collection, um, other than our general library collection management policy, which governs how we collect books and, um, maintain them and then deaccession them. Uh, for the purposes of this, um, brief presentation, deaccession means to get rid of, or to take out, take an accession out of your collection. Um, so donations to the history room have been somewhat infrequent during the past few years, um, since I've been there. There was a huge push for building the history collection in the first decade, uh, of the century, 2000 to 2010. Um, we had a number of items that had been given to us previously by Virginia Satterfield and other members of the community who were closely related to the library. Um, and then in the early 2000s, the Friends of the Library really pushed for, um, people to give us everything they had relating to Clayton history. Um, which was wonderful that as we were going through the, um, the collections recently to, um, put them into temperature-controlled, um, storage so that we can store them correctly and preserve them, it became very clear that we needed a really good outline of what we were supposed to have in our collection, what really fit into our policy, and, um, to help us maintain a collection that has actual, has value and relevance to this community. Um, so going through the policy, um, or, I'll just tell you a little bit about what this, um, does. It starts by talking about the scope of our collection, so just the kind of things that we currently have. Um, it talks about, um, and that would be as far as like, things that are, really, we want things that are specific to Clayton. The Johnston County Historical Association has a large collection of things that are more general for Johnston County. For the most part, if it's coming from Smithfield, we don't necessarily need an original copy of it in our collection. They'll have that at the Johnston County Heritage Center. Um, we also consider things that, um, we can preserve at a, a good cost, things that are not gonna cost us too much to preserve. We do not have, um, the latest technology in rare book preservation, we do not have a textile preservation center. There's, there's a lot that goes into really keeping things, um, as they should be. But we do have a number of things in our special collections. We have a large photo collection. I would guess that we have between 50 and 100,000 photos in our collection that have not been scanned in. So we have a lot of photos. We have, um, a museum collection, um, we have textiles, we do have, we actually have a lot of Christmas ornaments from the early 90s. We have, um, those were, that were made by the town of Clayton. We have, um, many things in our collection, lots of stuff from Beddingfield Drugs, we have a lot of old artifacts from them. Um, and then we have a genealogy collection, which looks at different families from Clayton and, um, particular persons of interest. So as well as going over our scope, it talks about the general responsibilities for that collection, who maintains it, who, um, makes choices about it. Um, we talk about, uh, the amendment of our policies, um, and then it just goes through the guidelines for acquiring and getting rid of items. So you all have this collection policy, um, in your packet, and I think the main pieces here that we've really made, um, we've narrowed down what we will accept in our collection. We talk about the accessions process and how we're much more careful about people filling out specific forms. We have a committee that meets when anybody wants to, um, to donate to the collection. Um, we also have a process for deaccessioning items, so if something is officially in our collection, we decide that we no longer, no longer fits the scope of what we want in our collection, we have a process for getting rid of those items. Um, and this just helps us make sure that our collection is useful and can be preserved into the future. Are there any questions? Yes, Porter?
Thank you, thank you, obviously. The history room, I guess, formerly history room, was a very, um, interesting but busy, um, area of the library. Uh, with your de-concession, I guess is that?
De-accessions, yeah.
De-accession, uh, um, how are you notifying, or how are we gonna let people know if there are, you know, people in the community that are interested in some of these items, if they are not donated elsewhere or sold to another nonprofit?
So, the first kind of, before we get to the de-accessions part of the policy, there is a, a consideration here that states, when somebody donates something to the library, it is our property after that. So if, um, Ms. Archer donated her running shoes, and I'm not, we actually do have some people's shoes, if she donated her running shoes from 1994 into our collection, and we decided, yes, we need these running shoes, and we kept them, we do have a general statute that we're not gonna get rid of something, we're not gonna decide to keep something and then get rid of it until at least a few years have passed. But say that she put them into our, our collection, and then we decided, you know, we really don't need to keep this old pair of running shoes. Um, the last, uh, page of your document, it talks about how we document getting rid of our items. Um, so if it's something from a specific family, we will correspond with them and ask if they would like, like that item back. Then we can check with, generally, I'll check with, um, Johnston County Heritage Center to see if it's something that they would want to keep. Um, for instance, we had two sets of some very huge volumes of genealogy works. We're keeping one of those sets, but we don't need the second set. So I've contacted Johnston County Heritage Center to see if they want to keep a copy of it, and they do. So we're trying to make sure that we are covering our bases so that everybody's got access to it. But the first step of that would be if... access to it, but the first step of that would be if the person is still available, we know who originally gave it to us, as much as possible, we'll give it back to that person if they want it. A lot of times, they're not gonna want it, and from there, we can make further decisions. If we have any real concerns about it, we bring it to our library board and they can discuss it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mr. Thompson.
I think this is a good policy. I think, you know, all anybody can ever hope for is that they donate something that'll be taken care of and put to good use, and I think the policy really goes into detail how things will be handled from beginning to end. Also, just wanna thank you for your collaboration with the Heritage Center at the county. I've seen some good, positive posts out there lately of things that our library has done to assist them, and I think that's good that there's that collaboration between the two entities, and I appreciate that. And with that, I'll make a motion to adopt the historical collection policy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of the historical collection policy. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And I wanna give a shout out to your library board, 'cause we appreciate them vetting all of this stuff before it actually gets to council and is made into policy. It's a big help.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, y'all wanna take a break, or what?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna call for a 15-minute recess.
Let me see, the next item on the agenda is the SCADA standardization.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Madam Clerk, Town Manager. I hope you all are doing better with the time change than I am because it's about to kill me right now. But thank you, Heidi, for providing something to get my sugar level back up because I was about to pass out back there. Anyway, I come here tonight, I know you all have been here a long time and I don't want to, you know, stretch this out. I come here tonight about the procurement method for the service provider for the SCADA system integration services. So I always like to go with a what, a why, and then the ask. So the what, this is General Statute 143-129E6 under sole source, which we all know about. And what that is, is available when the performance or price competition is not available. Two, the product is available only from one source. Or three, standardization or compatibility is the overriding consideration. The why, town staff on the Sam Branch Water Reclamation Facility project are proposing to use the sole source statute, Section 3, standardization compatibility to select the service provider for the SCADA integration services. The town currently uses custom controls to provide the services for the collections and distributions department. Staff feels it's advantageous for compatibility and ease of service to continue to use them for the SCADA integration at the new Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility. We all know I've been doing procurement a long time. I've used this exemption quite a few times. We used it here at the town recently with our meters, the water meters and the electric meters to make them compatible. And, you know, so they're compatible townwide. Also, I've used them in the past with generators, generator services like this here. It's always good to have one service provider rather than having one for this, one one here and one there. So the ask tonight is, town staff and the procurement manager, we've reviewed this because sole source can be a little tricky and you have to do a little investigating and look into it. So after review and determining that the sole source was the best procurement method for the SCADA integration services, the ask is that council approve the sole source exemption to allow town to use custom controls as the service provider for the SCADA integration. So are there any questions? Hopefully this was pretty straightforward. And the reason this is, is I will say the statute does ask us for each project or each time unless we were to actually do a blanket, that we come before you for a actual sole source.
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, may I motion we approve the sole source standardization for the SCADA project?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you all so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I wish to thank all three people who have let me know that we skipped item 8B. All three of you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the 2022 Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds. And look, the man presenting didn't even say, hey, you skipped me, but some of the rest of you clowns. Good thing you didn't.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Robert Mackay, Finance Director. Tonight we have two items on the agenda. First is a bond order and the second is a series resolution. The bond order is amending our existing bond order. It's going to carry us well into the 21st century. It basically positions the town to go into the public market. Up to this point, the towns only did private placements with its water sewer financing, even though they were revenue bonds that were privately placed with a bank. In this upcoming project with the Sam Branch Water Reclamation Facility, we're currently paralleling the public market as well as a private placement. And in order to do the public market, we need a bond order of this nature to be able to do it this time and as well into the future with other projects. The biggest difference between the fifth amended bond order and where we're currently at now is probably the fact that we're establishing a trustee. US Bank is going to act as the trustee in this. And so when it comes time to make a debt service payment, rather than the town paying the the bondholder directly, we will remit the funds to the trustee five days in advance of the payment due date. And the trustee in turn will actually be making the payments to the bondholders. So that's the biggest difference. The resolution is actually what's authorizing the town to issue up to $100 million of revenue bonds. And it also has, I believe it's number 10 in the resolution, it has the option for a private placement. So we're still keeping that window open. We have until November 18th to inform the LGC which option we're going, if we're going to do public market or private market. And pretty much what's driving that right now is the interest rate between the two. For the past month or so, the public market has been more favorable than the private. And if that continues, that's probably the option we're going to go with. But we'll be making that decision. We expect to, just so council knows, we expect to have confidential ratings back by Monday from the rating agencies, i.e. Moody's S&amp;P. And we expect to receive an updated offer from Capital One on the private placement side for the financing. So again, by the 18th, we have to make the decision and tell the OGC which way we're going. And if we decide to go the public route, those confidential ratings will become public, they'll get published. Any questions? I'll be happy to entertain.
Comments, Sir Robert. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the bond order?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the bond order. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve Resolution 2022-86?
Second.
We have a motion for the adoption of Resolution Number 2022-86. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Up next are Fire Station 1 and 2 Improvement Projects Construction Contract Award.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Shannon Poole, engineering technician here with the town. And tonight I have two items for you. One is requests for contract award for Fire Stations 1 and 2 improvements. And then two is a budget amendment. The award will include a base bid and three alternates. And just a little bit about the projects. Fire Station 1 will include a riser room as well as the automatic sprinkler system throughout the building. This will include a tie-in around the back to our water. And for Fire Station 2, it also includes a riser room and an automatic sprinkler system throughout. The addition to some much needed storage as well as a workout and PT space for staff there. Let's see. The town of Clayton, well, the fire department did receive a grant from FEMA to go towards this. It's for the sprinkler system for $71,000 back in August 2021. We put this out for bid in just this past September. And bid openings were the first of October and we only received two. So per the general statute, we had to rebid it. And on October 13th, we did receive two bids. And we had the lowest bidder of WB Brawley for the amount of Then for the alternate 1, now I can tell you more about that in a few minutes, was $0. Alternate 2 was $31,848. Alternate 3 was $92,777 for a total contract of $1,410,402. Again, that was $1,410,402. Let's see, for alternate 1, it'll be just for specific door hardware that the fire department wanted. I think it kind of goes with what we're already using. So the contractor added no dollars amount to do that. The alternate 2 is for Fire Station 2, is to fix the drainage issue in the back of the building where the apron is. It's a drainage as well as a drag for the fire, for the fire trucks, is that correct? Can't get into to the bay in the back. And then for alternate 3, again, at Station 2, is to put up a fence to secure the back property. So the town staff and the architect have reviewed everything from the contract and recommends awarding to WB Brawley. As well as the contract has been reviewed by our contracts manager, Sean, and gave a thumbs up on that. Due to the increase in scope, kind of it started as the sprinkler system addition. That's where our budget amendment will come in and you'll see it in your packet there if you have any questions. I'm sure that Robert can speak to that a little bit. So the staff request town council to award the contract to WB Brawley and authorize the town manager to sign contract, any change orders, and deliver this project within budget. Are there any questions?
Questions for staff? All right. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Sims.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve of the bid award.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the bid award. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Sims.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that the adoption of Resolution 2022-88.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of Resolution 2022-88. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Sims.
I make a motion of adoption of Budget Amendment Ordinance 2022-11-01.
Second.
I got a motion and a second for the adoption of the Budget Amendment Ordinance 2022-11-01. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we'll jump over to the staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, with the interest of time, we keep my comments very short. Just want to say thank you to everybody that came out for today's first annual Operation Green Light Ceremony that we had at 5 o'clock out at the Veterans Memorial. That is in celebration of Veterans Day, that is this Friday. I want to say thank you again also to all the servicemen and women throughout the country who've made it possible for us to enjoy our life here in the United States. We hopefully can turn this event into an annual ceremony as well as a celebration. We do still have a few green lights left here in Town Hall. So folks did want to stop by and grab some to put out this week, there are some there, get them while they last. Last thing, just a reminder, we are closed Friday for Veterans Day. As well as next Friday, the 18th, we will be closing town offices at noon for our employee banquet. So those are just two quick reminders. Other than that, I'm done.
All right, town attorney, town clerk.
No report.
Any other staff? All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak? All right, no one wishing to speak. I'll turn it over to council for comments. Mr. Sims.
Yes, so first of all, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and all those involved. As far as the town of Clayton, the Clayton Police Department, to the Fire Department, everyone that was involved in the Harvest Fest. I think this was a huge one, went off with very little hitches. And I just want to thank everyone involved. I think it just really encompasses what Clayton is all about. And after the pandemic and everything, you really get to see everything coming back to normal with that Harvest Fest. Also wanted to thank yourself, Mayor, and Councilman Porter for attending a meeting that we had. It was very productive, I felt. I got quite a few phone calls and the meeting was just one. And it wasn't a quorum, by the way, but it was with the commissioners, the county commissioners and the surrounding municipalities. And I think especially with the phone calls I got, they were all positive in the standpoint that we will be able to move forward into not just making Johnston County, but also Clayton better.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? So speaking of Harvest Festival, it was a tremendous turnout and hugely successful. And I'm very appreciative for the work of the Clayton Chamber of Commerce and all the entities really who played a huge part in making this be successful. But I am, you know, strong in making sure citizens are well educated. And so my request is going to be, I would like for the council to, I would like for staff to create for the council their best guess as to cost for public safety for this event. You know, when you have to bring in 35 or 40 additional policemen and overtime and all of this stuff, I just think it's important for us to know what the taxpayer investment was into something that we enjoy, but something that I don't think we often think about. So I'm asking as a request that that information be compiled and given to the council. All right, anyone else? All right, if not, we're going to jump on down to Sam's Branch Construction Award.
Mr. Mayor, I may ask that the clerk hand out copies of the updated resolution from the town attorney.
And just backtrack in a second, that would include Public Works, any and all costs affiliated from the town of Clayton for the Harvest Fest.
Yes, sir. We can bring that back.
Thank you.
So good evening, Mayor, members of council. Louis Duffy, project manager for the town of Clayton. Before you, I'm bringing the tentative award for the Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility as well as the adoption of the resolution that was just handed to you. So to get into details, on October 11th, the town received three bids. The lowest responsive, responsible bidder was Fail Construction Company Incorporated with a lump sum amount of $171,402,550. As you know, this project is the 6MGD wastewater treatment plant, or water reclamation facility that's going to set up the town of Clayton for success here in the future. It has been reviewed by town staff and our engineer record, Gannon Fleming. And they recommend to move forward with Fail. So I'm bringing this forward to you guys with the contingencies of the approval from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality as well as the North Carolina Local Government Commission. Once we get those approvals, we'll receive the authority to make a formal award and to enter a contract, which I will come and to enter a contract, which I will come back and ask for that approval at that time. And that's about it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, questions for staff? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the resolution of tentative award as presented by the clerk.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
So I have Larry Fantozzi here. He's the executive vice president of Thale, and I think he's going to say a couple words.
Good evening. I know it's late, so I just want to, I'm Larry Fantozzi, executive vice president with Thale Construction. I've been with Thale for 22 years. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to work with the town on such an important project for the town's growth, continued growth and success. We're very excited about this project and excited to be a part of it as a true partner with the town in a successful completion of this project. It's a local project, it's local, I live here locally in the Cary, not Garner, but local area. Thale is a local contractor with our headquarters in Hillsborough, where we have our full facility there, all our offices, and a full equipment maintenance shop. Thale's been in existence since 1947 for 75 years. 2012, we became part of the Tully Group, which is now the largest privately held construction entity in the country. It's a family-owned business, and we're basically a public works contractor, worked for many municipalities, counties, state agencies and federal agencies. We're a civil contractor, have done a lot of a lot of federal projects as well, Corps of Engineers. So we've developed certain programs in working with them that we adopted on all of our projects, including, you know, local municipality-type projects. So we have a very strong safety program, very strong safety record, and a high-quality control program as well. So I'm excited about the opportunity and look forward to a successful project as a true partnership with the town here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate that very much. And, you know, I'm really proud of our project manager with this. He has yet to disappoint. And I'm very happy to have a company of your caliber and resource ability to help us with this. This is a super mega project for the town of Clayton. Our wastewater treatment plant that's operating as we speak was built before I was born in 1966. And I can only imagine how much debt they went into back in that day with a citizenry of maybe 1,000 people at most. And, you know, when citizens read a number like this, it's mind-blowing. And when I, as a mayor, sit here and read this number, it's still mind-blowing. So, but, you know, the point of the story is, it is something that is setting Clayton up for the future long after we are all finished here. And I feel confident that the town of Clayton is in good hands, and we thank you for that. And if you can bring it in 10% below the 171, we'd be thrilled.
We'll work towards that goal for you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just thank you to Thale Construction. We're looking forward to working with you. And I'd just like to commend this council for two major actions this evening, particularly with this project. The approval of the bonds, the bond order, item B, that wasn't missed but almost missed. And the approval of this construction contract are really going to be putting us on a path here to be able to take Clayton into that the next 10 to 20 years. And this is a big milestone evening for us. And just congratulations to the project team that's been working on it too. It's been a lot of work to get to this point, and we're excited. There is a little bit more runway. We do have to go through those other approvals with the state. But effectively, we are looking at site construction to really start kicking up just after the first of the year again. So appreciate it.
All right, if there's nothing else to come before us, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Please clear the room.
To come before this board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
Aye. Motion carries. Good night.